You're younger than my kids. Half of your age would be my grandchildren.
I would like to call the December 8, 2015 USD 305 Board of Education meeting in order. If you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or corrections to our agenda?
Yes, Madam President, under Item 12, Executive Session, need to remove the executive session for personnel, please.
Okay, anything else? Any other changes?
That's it.
Okay. Can I motion? Thank you. Thank you.
I thought we'd jump in here. I move approval of the agenda as corrected.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So moved. Moving on to our recognitions and presentations, starting with our You Make a Difference Award with Ms. Jennifer Bradford Vernon.
The You Make a Difference Award is presented to staff members whose exemplary actions support students, colleagues, and the mission of Salina Public Schools. Recipients of these awards receive a lapel pin and a handwritten note personally delivered by a Board of Education member. Dorothy Goodwin, Sunset Library Instructional Assistant. Dorothy has played a key role in getting the new librarians settled at Sunset. She has answered a million questions, shown how things work, and warmly extended the welcome map. Co-workers rely on Dorothy. She is always ready and willing to help them. Recently, at Sunset Night at the Public Library, she volunteered to meet families in the parking lot. Thank you, Dorothy. Keith Leander, Lakewood Middle School Night Custodian. After a credit card receipt went missing during a book fair at parent-teacher conferences, Keith solved the problem with his willingness to go the extra mile. When it was determined that the receipt had been taken out in the trash, Keith kindly found the correct bag containing the receipt. Keith's action resolved this dilemma, making a big difference to his colleagues. Thank you, Keith. This evening, we will be recognizing the Superintendent Excellence Awards, and if students aren't present this evening, we will deliver the awards out of the Board Office for them. Our first group of awards goes to cross-country state qualifiers at Central High School. Brad Dix is the coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the cross-country students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor? Parents, if you would like to take a picture, stand, and we'll be glad to pause for a photo. Salinas Central had two athletes qualify for state. Tyler Olmstead, sophomore, placed 74th at state. Jetta Green, senior, placed 25th at state. She will also earn Academic All-State because she has a cumulative GPA over 3.75, and she finished in the top 30 at the state cross-country meet. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Congratulations. Great job.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thanks.
Our next group of awards goes to cross-country state qualifiers at South High School. Travis Peterson is the coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? Will all the cross-country students please line up in the front as well? As I call your name, please step toward Mr. Hall so you can receive your award, and then please return to the line. Salinas South had eight athletes qualify for state and cross-country. Daniel DeWint, senior, placed 97th at state. Macy Lindenberger, junior, placed 53rd at state. Josh Reed, junior, placed 6th at state. Drake Walters, junior, placed 87th at state. Keaton Munsel, freshman, placed 31st at state. Connor Munsel, freshman, placed 89th at state. Brandon Rechtinwald, freshman, placed 78th at state. Ivan Pike, freshman, placed 102nd at state. Ross Bowling, junior, alternate. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Congratulations. Thanks for going out for this. Congrats.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Our next group of awards goes to tennis state qualifiers at South High School. Ryan Stewart is the coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? Will all the tennis students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor? South girls tennis team had three state qualifiers this season. The team finished 11th overall in team standings at Class 5A State Tournament. Doubles, Jessica Coleman, sophomore. And Quinn Monk, junior, finished 8th place in doubles at state. Their season record was 24-14. Singles, Tessa Wilcox, sophomore, was a state singles qualifier. Her season record was 22-16. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Great job, you guys. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our next group of awards goes to tennis state qualifiers at Central High School. Mike Gaul is the coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? We invite all the Central tennis students to the front. The Lady Mustangs tennis team finished the year as AVCTL League Champions, 5A Regional Champions, and placed 7th in the Class 5A State Championships. Singles, Brittany Blackham, junior, finished 2nd place in league singles and 3rd at regionals. Her season record was 25-12. Ashley Sankey, senior, finished 4th place in league singles and 4th at regionals. Her season record was 19-14. Doubles, Paige Higer, junior, and Caroline Bolgerson, junior, finished 3rd place in league doubles and 3rd at regionals. Their season record was 27-9. Sidney Casau, senior, and Jerret Richardson, senior, qualified for the 3rd time in their careers and finished 7th at state. They were league doubles champions and regional doubles champions. Their season record was 28-10, and both finished their careers with over 80 varsity wins. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Congratulations. You great guys. Good job.
Good job. Thanks, Coach.
Next, we recognize a golf state qualifier at South High School. Trey Crowe is the coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall? And will Annalisa Bridge please come to the front? Annalisa Bridge, junior, was the South High School state qualifier, and Annalisa finished 10th at state. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you. Our next group of awards goes to golf state qualifiers at Central High School. Steve Ewing is the coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the golf students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor at this time? The girls golf team placed 9th at state with a team score of 412. Team members are Sarah Brown, junior, Ellie Cobb, sophomore. Ellie finished 11th at state with an 89. Elena Ewing, junior, Tisha Jane, junior, Sarah Mermis, junior, Grace Trulove, senior. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now. Next, we have awards for soccer state qualifiers at South High School. Dave Oderkirk is the coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? Will all the soccer students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor at this time? The Salinas South Boys Soccer Team ended up 1st in state with an overall record of 19-2. This was the first state title for South High Boys Soccer. Team members include Edgar Sylvester, Jonathan Coleman, Eric Hernandez, Jose Poncy, Jose Escobedo, Jesus Martinez, Octavio Solis, Logan Manavong, Zach Krezicki, Gonzalo Alvila Castro, Marcos Palacios, juniors Ethan Bandre, Rodolfo Diaz, Georgie Gonzalez, Ricardo Diaz, Jose Torres, Danielle Garcia, Jacob Amador, David Palacios. Soffmores Manny Esparza, Esteban Escobedo, freshmen Aline Velo. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
It hasn't come any better. Congratulations.
Yeah, well done. Keep going, guys. Keep going.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Great job, you guys. Really proud of what you did.
Well done.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right.
Keep going on those wins, would you? Good job.
Our next group of awards goes to students at South High School who competed in state math competitions. Candace Mahoney and Jason Hooper sponsored the team. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? Will all the math students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor at this time? South High students participated in the Fort Hayes State University Math Relays on November 14. The South High math team placed 5th overall in the 4A, 5A, 6A high school category at Fort Hayes. South High had 16 students competing who contributed points to the overall score. Gage Birch Lydic, freshman. Jessica Coleman, sophomore. Madison Gephardt, freshman. Olivia Giroux, senior. Zachary Kazicki, senior. Brandon Magazine, senior. Isaac Mitchell, freshman. Tong Wen, sophomore. Tyler Ross, junior. Luke Street, freshman. Connor Talbot, freshman. Nicholas Taylor, senior. Eli Truitt, junior. Ethan Trong, sophomore. Trey Turner, freshman. Jane Wang, senior. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well done. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Our next group of awards goes to students at Central High School who competed in state math competitions at Fort Hayes. Deanna Cullens sponsored the team. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? Will all the math students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor at this time? The Central High math team placed 3rd overall and was awarded a school plaque. Central High had 15 students competing. Zach Hilbig, senior. J.D. McHenry, senior. Josh Walters, senior. Alec Wilson, senior. Jamie Holly, senior. Hannah Jansen, junior. Dylan Wenzel, junior. Abby Schroeder, junior. Colin Goldsmith, junior. Annie Hayes, sophomore. Chloe Gillett, sophomore. Garrett Newton, sophomore. Gage Burmaster, freshman. Deena Fayed, freshman. Carol Anne Figs, freshman. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now. Next, we recognize ego meet qualifiers at South High School. Jeanne Crycheck sponsored the team. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? Students, please line up next to Mr. Hall and Principal Stevens at this time? Tyler Ross, junior, placed 1st in individual regionals in the aquatics event. These students placed 2nd as a team at regionals. Jane Wang, senior. Eli Truitt, junior. Sarah Zajek, senior. Alexis Barnes, senior. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you.
All right, moving right along in our recognitions and presentations to our Salina Arts and Humanities Bond Update with Mr. Anderson.
Well, Bill's setting me up. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on where we are in this partnership. There's going to be a PowerPoint that we're not probably going to read to you, but we'll include some of the highlights of what we wanted to update you with. One is a repetition of excerpts of your design philosophy. I think it's important maybe to take a quick second and share with those of you who were either maybe working for the district or not on the board the last time there was a bond issue. The last time our office served is what's called a resource partner. That is, we bring our expertise. Grace Peterson is here representing our visual arts coordination, and she'll be going over a bulk of what it is that you're going to see tonight in an update. We use that professional staff to network with local artists and make connections with schools and with the community in a variety of different ways. Well, about 15 years ago, the district was well into construction, design, integration at the time that they adopted a statement of intent that included some of the same language in some of the updates that you see before you hear. And so, our job as an office was to locate some artists and even fund some of the projects in preliminary design, and then the individual schools through PTOs and others found additional resources. What is different this time, as you well know, about the eight months ago, nine months ago, maybe even a little longer, you allocated a certain portion of the bond project to our office or to have us administer as part of the bond project, directly integrating arts with the schools. And so, the scope of that project, again, as you may well know but may not know, includes the eight elementaries, two middle schools, two high schools. Each of the additional facilities as well that we'll be highlighting here in a little bit. Approximately, or an amount not to exceed $125,000, has been allocated for all of those, and the breakdown that is, as you can see. Grace is going to go through some details on the elementary projects. The high school projects are just underway, but we've put a placeholder of approximately $30,000 for each of those, $6,500 for each elementary, and then each of the additional buildings is $2,000. Now, that may seem like a discrepancy, but what I also want to call your attention to tonight, you're going to get to hear and see some things that we're doing with resources that we already had from the River Festival and some other sources that we're bringing to the project. So the visual impact at many of these schools is going to be quite substantial, but not at a cost to the district. It's going to be a sharing of resources that we've already had. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Grace, and while she's visiting, I'm also going to be sharing some copies. We haven't presented you with copies of the Arts Infusion Guide. That is your partnership with our office each year. You provide about 25% of the arts education funding that we do directly in the schools of integrating arts with curriculum at the elementary, middle, and high schools, and this highlights both those programs and other community partners who on their own offer arts education in the community. So I'll be distributing those as Grace visits with you.
Thanks, Brad. So I just wanted to go into a little bit more detail with our elementary schools. Those were the first projects that we started out. We contacted local artists and let them kind of participate in the process of applying for these positions as art partners in the schools. We received several applications and narrowed things down to about eight artists that are -- some of them are a little farther along in the process. This is a great professional development for them because we paired them with people who are a little bit more experienced, and that's a great part of this partnership with USC 305. It allows us to help local artists as well, and then the interaction between the kids and the students. So they've each been kind of given a template. We wanted to have equanimity between the elementary schools, and so we've asked them to design a magnet mural, an interactive mural, that the kids could participate in the creation of different compositions that will change over time, all the time changing, and that could be utilized for educational purposes by the teachers that are not just art teachers, but it could be used for math and all kinds of English, and there's -- it's kind of a limitless medium. It's a big refrigerator door, but much cooler than that because it'll be in a space where kids aren't normally allowed to interact with those things that are in the hallway, and it'll give them opportunity to do so. The other portion of it is a student collaboration with a local artist. So each school is very different. They each had different things that they wanted to accomplish with their collaboration. Some had a tall order of working with every student in the school, and that is a difficult thing to do, but it helped kind of drive the process, the creation of that process, so that each child may actively participate in the painting or creation of a piece that represents them. The others might have a process where they could utilize writing or drawings that the children created to incorporate into their own vision, and something that they've created, gathering information from staff and the kids as well. So they're all very, very different, but will represent the kids and allow them to have some ownership in these pieces, which was the whole idea. So I want to skip to middle school. Kind of covered two slides on that one, just so you know. I kind of covered two slides on that one, just so you know. Middle school projects are really interesting. We're working with our new education coordinator, Stacy Ash. Gear is a graffiti artist from Kansas City. We have a huge collection of his murals for -- oh, sorry, Brad's passing out the -- I was supposed to say that. Passing out the Education Infusion, Arts Infusion Guides. His work is featured on the front, and he's also pictured in there. He's worked with schools in Kansas City to create spaces within their schoolyards that were beautiful. They had a problem with tagging and some issues with safety, and they hired him, and he created murals that have gone unspoiled and given the kids kind of a ownership of that space. He's going to be partnered with a local musician, Cash Hollista, and they're going to talk about hip-hop culture and the positive aspects of getting involved in your community, how you represent your community, that you should have pride in your community, and they're going to be working together with the kids on creating some murals for those spaces in addition to placing some of our existing murals, of which we have many over the years that are just been sitting in storage, and this is the perfect opportunity for them to be fully utilized. They're beautiful. A lot of them have animals and all kinds of colorful action going on in them. They're -- the larger murals that we have in that collection are placed downtown in the arcades. You've probably seen them walking to Ad Astra or the Art Center or something. But we have many, many others that will be combined with an artist's work in the alternative schools. Brad will be focusing more on the high schools, and you had several, let's see. You have those listed.
Quick note on those, and I see we have our two principals here. We've had an interesting dance in this project to make sure that getting in early with really the smallest portion of many of those school budgets of not having the tail wag the dog. So, we allowed design and integration and other things to take place prior to getting more actively involved, and so, with the funding and the design approval of the two high schools, what I've been doing is having some preliminary conversations with two different kinds of artists. South High, by its need and design and what both the architects and some of the folks that approved the initial design, there were large spaces of two-dimensional space or a flat space within the school that needed some design enhancement, so we're looking at 2D artists for that. Salina Central had indicated an interest in enhancing its entryway or frontage and looking at some possible three-dimensional ideas. So, we're having -- I just spoke to some of the art faculty during the groundbreaking about having a preliminary conversation of what level of engagement their students might want to get involved and what local or nearby regional resources we have in sculptors, which there aren't very many, but who is available to come and help shape a discussion that will begin shortly after the first of the year. So, that's where we are with the high schools. We don't have artists named or identified. We just have preliminary concepts, and we'll begin our meetings shortly after the first of the year.
I think that about covers all of the different types of projects. We wanted to open it up for questions, if you have any specific questions about individual schools. I can give you some examples of some projects that are going on, if that's helpful to you. One of the projects that's starting actually this week is at Stewart. We have partnered with the Art Center. They have a new paper-making capabilities that's really unique to the Art Center, and they're trying to utilize that in very specific ways. One of the beauties -- one of the beautiful things about that process is that the kids will be allowed to bring in a piece of clothing that they have worn, and it'll be contributed into this bulk, and the artists will separate that, and then they will process that cloth to make paper for the mural. So, the mural will actually be created from the kids' clothing. They'll write on that. They're going to be doing some writing exercises, but it also allows the kids to see the paper making process and see that whole thing go all the way through, and we're excited to be able to offer that. They're going to have a woven landscape. I didn't want to give you an illustration of it because I don't want to nail it down too much. There's still some things, depending on the colors that the kids bring in, things like that, that might change the way it looks, but it's going to be a really fascinating project, and we're really excited about it. One of the other processes that has been started is with Connie Burkett -- I'm sorry, Jenny Davis and Cassandra Smith will be doing that first project in Stewart. Connie Burkett has two schools. She's got Schilling and Sunset. She's going to be doing some really interesting paper collages that are driven from the kids' writing as well as their drawings, and she's going to be interpreting those and creating landscapes as well. So, those are just a couple of examples. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm curious. Is anyone doing a visual recording of the process in various schools?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't include that. Yes, we are. We're going to be documenting all the processes. Artists will be documenting. It's a little bit different how each one of them is going to end up with something, but the majority are going to create books that'll then be housed in the library that'll talk about the process. That may include just the process of what they went through. It might include the drawings that were the inspiration from the children. We have one artist's team that's -- their inspiration for their work is a gratitude journal that they'll be giving the kids. We haven't decided what -- because being a former art teacher, I know if the kids worked on something, they want to take it home with them. We haven't quite decided how we're going to do that, if we're going to ask for the journals back to be housed in the library, or if we're going to give them and make copies. So, we're kind of figuring that out. That's at Meadowlark.
And will there be some kind of a visual presentation of all of these wonderful pieces when they're done that could be presented here so that the public can see it as well?
I don't know. I think that would be a great idea, but you -- we will have, I'm assuming, a building dedication or art dedication at the location.
Right, but it would be nice for --
To have them all at one.
Right, so that people could actually see the --
I think that would be great.
-- our TV audience.
Part of the summary or the conclusion of this will have a good documentation or a record of each of those completed projects. Because of the length of time of those and the cycles of when they're done, that may be done in groupings where a summary of the completion after the last elementary is done may come back.
Yeah.
Or the middle schools, and we might do those at those times. But part of our responsibility and our work as an agency in promoting these resource partnerships will be collecting some of that documentation and using that in promotion through our website, sharing with the district, and also back with you. So, yes, we'll do our best to
Thank you.
... communicate that.
The elementary schools timeline, too. We're trying to get all the projects wrapped up by the end of the year, so they may not be placed, but the pieces will be made.
Good.
I get the sense, and I don't know if I'm right or not, but that this is kind of a unique thing. Probably there are other school districts doing it, but it just seems really unusual to me in a really positive way.
It is. The scale of it is -- I mean, I don't know. Yeah, the scale of it's pretty large.
I'd say there's no one else in a 700-mile radius that's doing anything close to this scale.
I think that's safe.
And that's probably being generous. First of all, there are very few other cities. One other city in the state of Kansas that has a paid Department of Arts and Culture that can help with things like this. So, Salina is blessed to have a city department that is able to hire professionals in their disciplines to help in arts education and to help with visual arts coordination. So, there are very few communities that can do that, and it would be taxing on a school district without a fine arts specialist or without a paid professional staff that just focused on that to try to coordinate something of this scale. So, we're excited about the opportunity to work with the district, and for the level of professionalism that we've seen, it has been absolutely incredible. Chris and his team, and Bill, and their communication. I haven't seen anything operate so smoothly in all of my years. It has gone very, very well.
Right.
Thank you. I will tell you, too, coming from Lawrence, myself, and being an art teacher there and on the Arts Commission, that we were very jealous of Salina's Artists and School Program and the Arts Infusion. That partnership is not something that happens every day, and the recognition of its importance is really great.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on in our recognitions and presentations to our Heartland Programs update with Ms.
Thanks for having me. I wanted to take a few minutes to give an overview of Heartland Programs. In August, I met with Mary Ann Carroll, Ann Zimmerman -- oh, thank you -- and Nancy Kiltz. Because we were taxed, federal government always wants to give us more things to do, so we had a governance readiness tool that we needed to do as part of our new five-year grant. So, we got together and we looked at this readiness tool, and there were 15 indicators on it, and from those 15 indicators, we determined that 11 of those were strong areas for us, but there were four areas that we thought we wanted to focus on and just make stronger, and those were basically in the areas of communication and oversight. So, as a result, one of the goals that we identified was it would be really good with some new board members, a new director, to get to know each other a little bit better and to, from time to time, maybe once every semester, I would come in front of you and talk about a different aspect of the program. So, tonight, I just wanted to give an overview. It's a complex program, but it's a really great program and one that I'm very happy to be part of. So, this year is exciting because we started our 50th -- or celebrating our 50th anniversary, and that's pretty incredible in federal programs, and this Head Start's really considered to be a successful federal program, and it's always been shown bipartisan support, which is good, too, so we want to be liked by both sides. It's ever-changing, of course, and that's what makes it so great. So, a little bit of background, in January of 1964, President Lyndon B. Johnson declared a war on poverty. The goal was to eradicate or eliminate the causes of poverty by creating job opportunities, increasing productivity, and enhancing the quality of life. So, all of this led to the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964, and included programs such as, at that time it was called Project Head Start, but Job Corps, Vista, Community Action, programs like that. That's where everything got started. And Head Start then began in 1965 in the summer as an eight-week program, and it was based on four cornerstones, which was child development, family development, staff development, and community development, and those are still strong cornerstones today. This is a little bit -- I'm just going to briefly go through and highlight a few things. A lot of you have been around a lot longer than I have been, so you know all of this. But back in 1989 is when Head Start started in this area with 36 children at Hawthorne School. From there, you can see all the different things almost. I've got a much more extensive timeline that almost every year, something else happened, something else started. But in 1994, we began our collaboration with CKCIE. In 1995, our collaboration with the Health Department, where we have family consultants started. So, that's a 20-year program now, or 20-year partnership. Help opened in 2002 at Central High School. Our Ashby House partnership started in 2011. So, there's a lot of exciting things that have happened through the years since its inception in 1989. I just like this slide because the Head Start symbol, you know, symbols or Head Start logos that are very prominent usually tell a story. So, I'm not going to go through each one, but, you know, and you've got your slides in front of you, but it's just, there was a lot of thought that was put into creating this symbol, and it really sets the stage for understanding that Head Start exists within a larger context of national policy towards alleviating poverty, and this is -- it's maybe been tweaked a little bit, but for the most part, if you see this, you always know that there's a Head Start program or something's going on. And of course, Head Start's not babysitting. Some people still might think that, but it's really about educating not only children but the families, and really, you've got to get the families on board to make a difference in their children's life. So, Head Start believes strongly that engaging the parent as the first teacher and decision-maker is what it's all about. The child's part of the family, the family's part of the community, and that's what we try to stress as much as we can. This is the governing structure. You, as a school board, are the -- are our main governing body, and then, of course, we have a Head Start Policy Council that is put together at the program level, and 51% of our parents have to be part of Policy Council, and then the rest of it is made up of community representatives. And then, what's really great is that USC 305 recognizes the importance of having a board liaison sit on Policy Council, so a lot of you have filled that role, and Zimmerman is our liaison currently. So, that communication is really strong, and it really helps having somebody take an interest in our program and be able to, if I'm not here, answer a question if something comes up. We serve 198 zero-to-three-year-olds and 314 three-to-five-year-olds in Head Start. The zero-to-three is also part of our state early Head Start funding, and within all that is there's all these program options and lots of things going on. And then, we also take care of the state pre-K grant, which serves 60 children, eight children in our building blocks, and then parents as teachers, and that 100 number fluctuates. There's sometimes more and sometimes a little bit less. The reason I put this slide up is because programs that believe in systems are usually pretty effective and pretty efficient. So, Head Start believes in these 10 Head Start systems, and if you have things in place, your procedures, your policies, your protocol, then the things on the right, the comprehensive services that all Head Start programs across the United States are tasked with, those kind of weave in and out of the Head Start system. So, you know, home visits happen in all of our program options, which is a really good foundational piece, and then, you know, from transportation to developmental screening to nutritious meals, we make sure that we're taking care of all those things and meeting Head Start requirements as best we can, and we do it well. One thing that I wanted to point out is a requirement in Head Start is that we serve 10% of our enrollment needs to be children with disabilities. Currently, we have 11% that we're serving in Head Start and 17% in early Head Start, and that's -- it might fluctuate a little bit, but pretty much every year, we always meet those guidelines, and of course, being in partnership with CKCIE helps us as well. Homeless families that qualify under the homeless definition are categorically eligible. Currently, we're serving 8% in Head Start and 7% in early Head Start that are considered. And of course, we have family consultants that are working with those families and helping them, you know, figure out things and make a difference for them and kind of get out of that category. So, you all received a circles chart, so that's what I really wanted to focus on. This is something that was created long before I came, but it's really a good way to understand kind of how everything works and how much is going on at Heartland Programs. So, we'll start with the orange circle, and that's the home-based program. This is our collaboration with the Health Department, or our Health Department collaboration is included in that, in our home-based program. State early Head Start funds come from this. In this program, we're funded for 97 infants, and we have 11 family consultants that work in that program. They're required to make 90-minute weekly home visits. And we have socialization opportunities. Because they're in the home, we want to be able to get them out and socialize. But the goal is really to support the parents where they're at at the time and their role as their child's first and foremost teacher. Our Help program that we're really proud of, currently located at Central High School, will be moving, at this point, spring break, over to our Heartland program on Jupiter Avenue. But we're funded for 16 infants and toddlers. And really, we want to do our part to support high school graduation, so, and we do that. We had last year, 100% of the moms and/or dads that we served from South graduated, and 86% from Central High School graduated. And a lot of times, we're at 100% for both of those. But 11 of the 13 seniors that we, that were in that program last year graduated. So, there's always reasons. But also, our family consultants, we don't want to stop at high school graduation. We want to provide or let them know that there's other opportunities. So, a lot of times, our family consultants will take students who are interested on college visits, you know, to Kansas Wesleyan or K-State and support them. If they don't have the support at home to, you know, and encourage and make sure that they know that, you know, there's lots of opportunities out there for them. This is our biggest part of the program. These are our half-day classrooms, and we're, again, funded for 314. But state pre-K is also in that. So, we provide, we have 12 classrooms throughout our three counties and 36 classroom staff with five FCs. The goal is to increase school readiness. That's really what Head Start's all about right now, is to make sure the children are ready and the families are ready to go into public education and be contributing, you know, citizens in the big picture at the end. And we're also working hard to prepare them for kindergarten. We know how important that is. Childcare partnerships is part of our program. We have seven altogether, six childcare centers. Five of those are, well, we have, no, it's five in Celine County and two in Dickinson County. So, the five of those in Celine, four of those are childcare centers and one is a home provider. And these are for families that need full day, full year. They're working, they're going to school, and a half-day program just doesn't work for them. So, we're providing that full-day care for them. And again, center-based, full-day year. Our Head Start, early Head Start program, we're serving, currently serving, we have four programs located at Heartland on Jupiter. That's 32 zero-to-three children. And then, at Ashby House or Cornerstone, but our partnership with Ashby, we have a preschool, a three-to-five program with 14 kids there that's full day, full year. And then, we're serving four zero-to-three children there. And that's really a great program, a beautiful home, historical home, and it's a great partnership. So, again, school readiness and providing that full-day care to allow parents to work is what we're striving for. So, those are all the Head Start-funded programs. And then, we have parents as teachers. Last year, we served 139 children and parents as teachers that are zero-to-three. And they do monthly home visits and socializations as well. Building Blocks is our partnership with Central Kansas Mental Health Center. The children have to have a comprehensive treatment plan to be part of that. And that's really giving children some good support in their early years to be able to make a difference and be successful later on. Adult Education, that's our collaboration with Salina Adult Edge, Salina Adult Education. We're starting our 15th year in this partnership this year. And last year, we had 36 Heartland parents enrolled in our ESL classes. Summer Food Program, we're one of the sites for the Summer Food Program. And I asked Linda today, she said in June, the average attendance was, we had, served 66 children in June. And then, typically, it drops off in July. We serve 42, is our average daily attendance for Summer Food. And then, we also offer a summer dual-language learner's preschool for those kids that just might need just an extra little push to get ready for kindergarten. Just real quickly, you know, we consider, one of the strengths of Heartland Programs is that USD 305 is the grantee. We get a lot of support. There's a lot of good things that happen as a result. And you can see the rest of them. Our biggest challenges are children and families in crisis, you know, dealing with lots of different things that impact their ability to sometimes be successful. And so, that's why it's so important that we're here to provide that support for them. And then, it's a good thing and it's a bad thing. The qualifications or the credentials that are required for early Head Start and Head Start folks keep being raised, which is great, but we have difficulty finding those staff members. But however, being part of USD 305, we're able to, you know, give them a better salary. But the problem is the other programs that can't do that. So, that's a constant struggle, and I don't think that's going away. It doesn't need to go away, but we just have to be more creative with figuring out how to get staff qualified. And then, the last is, this is just wrapping up, but I've kind of gone through all of this, but, and you can look at that. But the last bullet says Head Start is alive and well in Dickinson, Ellsworth, and Celine Counties. And we're happy to come to work every day and do our job as best we can. Any questions? I kind of went fast. Sorry, I was wanting to get through it.
I just wanted to say that Head Start here in Salina has been just an outstanding program for a long number of years, and I appreciate so much what you and your staff are doing. One question I had, for a number of years, there were problems with getting children the appropriate dental care. Are we finding that that's still an issue?
Well, our numbers are still low. They're growing. We're doing better. But in fact, I just was talking to one of the program coordinators today about that needs to go back on our goals. Because we're, it's just, you know, they, convincing our families that infants and toddlers need it. Now, we're good in, with our three-to-five, but it's those zero-to-three that we still, you know, that preventive dental care, even as a baby, is important. And, you know, we have lots of pamphlets and things that we, you know, it's important that you don't leave a bottle in a child's mouth and all those kinds of things. But we don't have as many resources here. You know, Dr. Abic is great about seeing as what he can, but we can always use more.
I think that was one of the issues, finding providers.
Yes, absolutely. So, that's still a goal of ours, and we still want to improve. And we are improving, but it's not 100%.
I understand.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Moving along in our agenda to approval of our consent agenda items, which include the minutes of our November 10, 2015, regular meeting, our personnel report, our financial reports, which include our November bills list, our November bond bills list, our October treasures report, our October investment report, the October journal entries, the bond budget summary for November, professional development for individual development plans, college credit and district staff development plans, and to improve our encumbrance listings, which include, one, to CDWG for the purchase of data switches for remodeled areas of elementary buildings and in the temporary offices at Central, in the amount of $80,880, to Simplex Grinnell, in the amount of $117,789.89 for the purchase of three servers for the video security system, to Kansas City Audio-Visual for the purchase of projectors and supporting equipment for new classroom additions at the elementary, middle, and Heartland buildings in the amount of $121,290, to Roofing Solutions, in the amount of $26,793 for the professional inspection of all district roofs. To also approve Cottonwood Walking Trail change order and a gift from Cottonwood PTA for the change order in the amount of $34,439 to Walt Harmon Huffman Construction, and the gift from Cottonwood PTA in the amount of $15,000. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
I saw move.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So, moved 7-0.
I'd like to say thank you to the Cottonwood PTA for the gift to help defray the cost of the walking trail. It's very generous.
Oh, I'm so sorry, because Mary Ann's not here. I can't count. My bad. Moving on to our public forum, if anyone would like to address the board at this time, now would be the opportunity. Seeing none, we will move on to our action agenda item, starting with our Central High partial guaranteed maximum price with Mr. Upson.
As Chris is pulling this up, each of you have on your desktop a bits minimized the GMP summary for Salina Central High School, which will be the document that Mr. Upson refers to.
Good evening. I'd like to bring back Todd Knight from McCall and Gordon. He's going to talk about the GMP for Package 1 for Central High. And I'll stay here because it's, we're a little bit over budget. So, there'll probably be a little bit of dialogue about that, and that's okay.
Good evening. So, I thought maybe we could start quickly. This is going to be very similar to what we presented on Salina South. Same process, same procedure, fractured the project into two packages. This is the first package, or structural, package for Salina Central. And we have gone out and competitively priced the project through the subcontractor market and received proposals back and prepared this guaranteed maximum price estimate for presentation this evening. Quickly, I'll run through kind of how we have added up all the certain components of the project from general conditions, general requirements, all the way down through the steel package. So, right now, this early package would consist of basically earthwork utilities, the deep foundations, which are auger cast piles that help support the heavy pre-cast gym structure, the concrete and the pre-cast that we talked about on the pre-cast structure there for the gym, and the steel structure. And what this does is allows us to commence construction on-site while the final design documents for the remainder of the project or Package 2, which would be all of your drywall and finishes, casework, those kind of components, are coming down the homestretch through the design phase. So, what we've done is, now that we have 100% documents on this first package, we've eliminated the design contingency from the project. We no longer need that. We now know what the design entails. And we've received hard competitive numbers for that scope of work. And then, of course, the escalation, similar situation there. We have received bids for today's timeframe. And with your approval, we will proceed with hiring those subcontractors. So, escalation is no longer of any concern on this package. So, that being said, the total subcontracted amount right here is $5,005,116. And as that relates back to our previous design development estimate, that is roughly, I'm going to say, $21,105 below our previous budget. So, that was good news. It means our estimate was pretty accurate, and we've received favorable competitive numbers from the subcontractor community. We have since also worked with Chris and the Bond Office on making sure that we've got the, all the components included into the package that we, that basically Chris wants McCall and Gordon to handle. And we've added some of those items in which that requires a reallocation of those funds from one bucket to another. So, we've taken funds from the Bond Office master budget and included those now into the construction budget. And the items that we're talking about specifically are materials testing. That's specific because of the fact that we coordinate those, that materials testing provider throughout construction, so it just makes sense that we would be responsible to manage that contractor. Ox Blue cameras, where you, I believe you probably all have seen the Ox Blue cameras now, the live video feed from the site that we've installed over at Salina South. We'll do something very similar to that over on Central. And then, we've got the building permit. That typically, it kind of depends on which side of the fence we want to pay for that out of. In this regard, we've put that component into the construction side. And then, the temporary admin offices, which are being constructed right now. We are basically handling the accounting of that function through the GMP, which would be approved this evening, if all goes well. And then, all of the markups, similar markups to what you've seen in the past from Subguard Insurance Warranty, all the different markups that, insurances and things that we need to have in place to provide a full, complete project. And then, we also have allocated 2% for owner contingency to be used at your discretion through the project. So, as it stands right now, our total guaranteed maximum price proposed this evening is $5,839,231. So, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. I know I went through that pretty quickly, but again, it's pretty similar to what we went through on South. Anything to add, Chris?
To be, Todd did mention that we move in money from one bucket into another. I want to be clear that we're, what's annotated on the budget, we have soft costs and we have construction costs. What we're talking about is some of these items in this that we're asking McCall and Gordon to handle are being paid for at a Central High's soft-cost budget. So, we're still within the budget parameters that we set out with a couple of years ago on the project. So, we're not moving any money from anywhere else. It's all still within the project.
I'd like to make a motion. Excuse me. I move that we select Option 2 and approve the Package 1 guaranteed maximum price for Central High School in the amount of $5,839,231 and authorize the district to enter into a construction contract from the Count Gordon Construction, Inc., for the additions and alterations to Central High School as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So, moved 6-0. Thank you. Moving on in our discussion agenda to our patron insight survey results with Mr. Nobles.
Good evening, and thank you very much for inviting us to join you tonight. You have before you a 55-page research report that I am not going to read to you. I will walk you through the executive summary, and I will refer to various pages that have tables within the report. I'm going to try to hit the highlights. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Just to remind you, in late October through about mid-November, we did a telephone survey of 400 randomly selected patrons in Salina, geographically dispersed to match your population pattern. That methodology gives us a plus or minus 5% error factor for the questions that we were asking. We always start with a grading section. We ask people to grade, in this case, 15 different people, places, and things in the school district. If you would like to turn to page 14, there is a table that has all of your grades. This is our third patron survey that we have completed for the district. And so, we have results now going back five years, from 2010 and 2012, and now from 2015. And as you will see on page 14, 10 of the 17 different items, plus the district's overall performance, received a grade that is the statistical equivalent of a B. We asked people for an A, B, C, D, or F, and then, we convert that to a five-point scale. Factors at the top of the list included the district's efforts to provide a safe environment for schools, how welcome you feel when you visit the district, quality of education, and performance of both the teachers and the principals. Areas that received a, and I'll just touch base on one area that received a lower score than a B, closer to a C than to a B, the last area, the last number there involving citizens in decision-making earned scores that were closer to a C than to a B. And that will give you an indication that there is an opportunity for the school district to involve citizens in the decision-making process. And Mr. Hall and I have had a conversation. And Mr. Hall and I have had a conversation about how you might go about doing that. The other thing that you will notice on page 14, and you can also take a look at page 16, what we call patron hot buttons, those are the ones that are in bold. That is where 81% or more of the people give us a grade as opposed to saying don't know. I would tell you that in most school districts, about half of the items are patron hot buttons. In Salina, 16 of 17 are patron hot buttons, which tell us that the citizens of Salina are very interested in what is, what is going on, on almost every topic. If you would take a look at page 17, we ask a question that is an open-ended question. What do you think are the district's strengths? On page 17, you can see that topping the list, teachers, good academics and curriculum, and strong community support were the top three. On page 23, you have the results of areas needing improvement. And this is the only question on my survey where you want to hear the words "don't know" because that indicates that there are no top-of-mind problems. Don't know was, was the number-one answer. With 121 mentions, spending wisely, I will tell you is, is in the top three of every school district that we've ever worked with. Listening to patrons, once again, an opportunity there to have more patron input. The next section, we ask a series of questions about the awareness level that patrons had about the school district and state funding challenges. You can look at page 24 to see the chart. The, in answer to an open-ended question, the number-one response were, the number-one challenge facing Salina School District was state, lack of state funding or funding for programs from the state, followed by managing growth and overcrowding, and drugs and alcohol came in third. When we asked people their awareness level of the financial condition of the state of Kansas and its effect on public schools, 82% said they were either very aware or somewhat aware of the funding challenges. Answers, specific answers were that programs and services were being cut due to lack of funding, two, the governor has made huge cuts to education, and three, the quality of education is being compromised. Our next section, support or opposition to the school district offering advertising opportunities to local businesses on page 30. Respondents were divided almost 50-50 on this issue. 47% saying they would oppose or strongly oppose, 44% saying they would strongly support or support it. Taking into account the margin of error, that's a coin flip. The next section, results on page 32, 33, and 34. We ask about awareness levels of a variety of programs, five, five, five specific different programs that the school district is involved in in some manner. Two of those programs combined for a percentage that was at least two-thirds or higher. The Salina Adult Education Center at 81%, and the Alternative Education and Diploma Completion Program at 67%. Scores for the remaining programs were less than, than 50%. We then asked, and you can turn to page 37, support or opposition to the district providing various forms of early childhood education. Participants heard about three different ideas. The first idea was for universal preschool for children of, who were four years old that would be provided by the school district at no fee. Strongly favor or favor, score of 73%. Early childhood education for children not old enough to enter preschool, again, provided by the, by the school district, 67%. Third, offering universal preschool as described above, except that fees would be applied on a sliding scale, scored a 63%, strongly favor or favor. An interesting kind of footnote to this question, people who opposed or strongly opposed the various ideas about early childhood were against it kind of no matter what was described to them. So there, there was no differentiation between the age or the fee or whatever. You're either for early childhood or you're not for early childhood in terms of the survey results. And some of the, some of the comments that we heard about that kind of at the bottom of your page three, leave it to the private sector, it's a lower priority than other programs, and the funding is not there. We then ask a question about the awareness of the school's Chromebook initiative at the high school level. 49% of the respondents were either very aware or somewhat aware of that program. When we asked people to describe the program, they did a very good job of describing the program by saying each student is given a laptop computer, and that's the basic message that you, that you want to hear there. We then, on page 41, if you'll take a look at that chart, ask about awareness of the district's various emergency plans and those who are involved with keeping those plans current.
I'm sorry, what page?
Page 41. And what you'll see is the total of 85% of the respondents said-
I think it's on, it's on 45.
I'm sorry.
It's on page 45.
Okay. Total of 85%, we're either very aware or somewhat aware of the district's efforts in concert with the Saline County Emergency Management Group. Page 47 and 48 has a table about your information sources. We asked people where they turn to get information about the district. And you will see there friends and neighbors, number one, the Salina Journal, number two, and outdoor marquees at the schools, number three. On page 52, it's a recap of a question that we asked regarding key skills needed by high school graduates, do a three-point weighted scale with the presentation of 13 different life skills. Top-of-the-list, ability to use technology, followed by communication skills, and followed by problem-solving skills. The rest of the report was some of the demographic questions that we asked. You will see a number of tables throughout the report that breaks this down into how long people have lived in the district, whether they have children in the district, and those types of things. Happy to answer any questions if I can.
What is a statistical, a statistically significant difference? How do you measure that? Because I, I went back and looked at 2010 and the 2012 and so on, and I'm looking at the various scores. And I've seen some of them dropping through the years. And, and when does that become statistically significant? What is this statistically significant drop or increase for that matter?
Outside of the plus or minus 5% error factors where we look with something like that. And the only one that I saw that was more than, that it was a drop more than that over a period of five years was the one that we talked about earlier, efforts to involve citizens in decision-making process. Everything else is the kind of normal fluctuation that we see in all the districts that we work, that we work with. It's a, it is a tough time right now in America to be talking to citizens about how they feel because of all the political activities and all of the negative news and all of the-
I wondered if that wasn't a part of it as well, that whole negative vibe that's out here?
That will, that will suppress numbers, kind of no matter where you are. So when I, when I'm looking at the results, when we are analyzing the results, we're taking that into consideration.
So in other words, if I were looking at the five-point scale rating and something dropped from a 4.40 to a 4.19?
Pretty close to a statistical anomaly, or margin of error anomaly, and maybe a statistical anomaly, given the times.
Okay.
Wouldn't worry too much about that.
All right. Any comments down there?
I do think our facility message is out because those things apparently have increased. People are aware of that. That's, that's a good thing.
Absolutely. I mean, the, the takeaway's just preliminarily, because what I would like to do is, is really give each of you an opportunity to drill down into this document a little more closely, and then at a, at a subsequent work session, really have a good conversation about some of the issues that are represented here. But some of the takeaways that I have, one was the facilities. They seem to be very, very pleased with the improvements that we've made there. I was very pleased to see that, I think it was like 85, 86% were either aware or, either strongly aware or aware of the school safety and security measures that have been in place for several years, and that's, and we have been really focusing a lot of attention on that in the last couple of years, so that was good. The trial balloons, if you will, we had a couple of questions that we wanted to put out there just to gauge their interest or their support or non-support. Early childhood was one, and I was very pleased with the results there. And each of those three categories, we had over 60% either support or very supportive of, of the idea of early childhood education. As recall, we went to the community as part of the bond issue, and that was a conversation we had. And when we had the community conversations and the feedback that were received at that time, we had some non-support there, and so we were concerned, and that, that led to us not making that part of the, of the bond issue. But it, it's good to see that we have some support there because, you know, it's important that, and I was going to share this during my soup's report, I still will, I still will, but early childhood is extremely important to our community. But that's also, it's part of our accreditation model moving forward in terms of kindergarten readiness. And when you listen to Ms. Larson, the number of times that she used the phrase kindergarten readiness is extremely important. And so that, it's good to see that we have that community support there. So I thought that was very, very good. And then just the overall perception of the school district. I thought the overall perception of the school district as measured by the survey was very positive. And so I, that was good. I'd like to see that as well. But that is an area, and, and Mr. Noble, what was referred to it is that we do need to kind of work toward reaching out to our citizens and, and making them feel a vital part of the decision-making process. And, and I have an idea that, that I'll share with the board at some point in time on, on a good way to do that.
I have a question. You say that this is with 400 randomly selected numbers. Did you have to call 500 to get 400 people to respond, or?
We had to call over 2,000 to get 400 people to respond.
Okay, and it came out such a nice round number. Is that?
No, 400 is the number-
You just stopped when you got to the 400?
Yeah, that's the number for the, for a market this size, that is the number that gives us the plus or minus 5%. And that's what we're shooting for. Smart people who know statistics, tell us what those numbers are. There's a chart online that you can read to, to figure that out, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional comments or questions?
I always appreciate these reports. They've added a lot to our knowledge of our district, our community, so thank you so much for the work you do.
Special thank you to the callers.
Yeah.
Yes, indeed. Always great to be in Salina. Thank you so much for having us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on in our discussion agenda to our state assessment results for Ms. X, with Ms. Xline.
I'm happy to be here and want to visit with you just briefly about state assessment results, our state assessment results from the spring 2015 Kansas assessments. I want to start just with a little bit of background about the assessments and some changes that have occurred in the Kansas assessments, information that our parents need to know, certainly, and our patrons need to know. The first major point that I want everybody to understand is that in Kansas, we have been really working to make sure that all students have a curriculum that prepares them to be college and career-ready. And you hear Kansas College Career Ready in the terminology that we're using, and it is really important that our students have the opportunity to do anything they want to do when they walk out of the doors of USD 305 upon graduation. The Kansas College Career Ready standards are more rigorous than the previous standards. The teachers that have actually worked with this particular assessment say that the mathematics test is more demanding than the ACT, and it is given a year earlier. And so the bar is high. The bar has been raised in comparison to the previous assessment. The assessment is also more demanding than the NAEP assessment, and you'll recognize the NAEP as the assessment that we use to compare our, the United States against other nations in terms of student performance. Kansas does take seriously the issue of college dropout and remediation rates. One of the real challenges that we face is kids entering college and having to pay for non-credit-bearing classes. And we, it is important to us that we make sure that when our students walk out of our doors, if they do choose to go to a post-secondary institution, that they're able to enter a course that would allow them to earn college credit. I do want you to know before I talk about the results that the way we have measured student learning has changed. There has been a significant shift in expectations for students. And as a result, the results from these assessments, that I will show you our aggregate data from, should not be compared with the previous assessment results. Two different assessments, and we, and this is the new baseline. The other piece is that this assessment is one measure of academic progress, one measure of academic readiness. There are many, many measures that we use to determine whether or not students are learning what we want them to learn, and so it's important to put any one assessment in the correct perspective and to use it just as a piece that gives us a glimpse into what our students know and what their preparedness is. The shift that has occurred is that the bar has been raised. If you think about a high jump bar, on the previous assessment, we had gotten to the point where the vast majority of our kids were meeting the expectation. And so we raised the bar and, and have created a new assessment, just like you would in track and field when everybody's able to clear that bar. So on the previous assessment, what students were mostly asked to do was multiple-choice assessment items, and the items were really focused on recall of knowledge, just basic knowledge, facts, and isolated skills. Most of the assessment items were one-part questions that didn't require kids to carry content from one question into another. The new assessment does require recall of knowledge. That is still definitely there. But there is also the requirement to apply skills. In real-world situations, there are questions with multiple parts where a student does one part and uses what it is that they determine to be the answer for the next part. And the other piece that is significantly different is there is a performance section that requires students to actually carry out more of a project, show their work, rather than just multiple choice. And the other piece is a multidisciplinary writing task. Our kids as young as third grade are being asked to read multiple sources of information, take notes from those, and write to a prompt for an on-demand writing in class. And so it's really exciting to see how our students are stepping up to the plate and are able to meet what's required when you put a really challenging task in front of them that's worth doing. We have been working hard to communicate results. In early October, individual student results were released, and at that time, we scheduled multiple meetings at every single school site to meet with our USD 305 families. We invited parents in, and we handed out those meeting dates at conference time, we sent home notes in backpacks inviting parents in, we did emails inviting parents in. And at those meetings, what our principals did, and, and boy, they spent a lot of time doing this, and, and I'm really proud of the message that, that we got out. We talked to parents about what did the Kansas assessment involve, just an overview of that, and then we talked about how do you read your individual child's report. So that happened all throughout October and November. So that happened all throughout October and November. And we had our last meeting, I think on December 2nd, was the final meeting. We did mail out reports to all parents so they have their child's reports in their hands as of November 20th. So what was discussed at that meeting was just how do you read your individual child's report? So in order to understand the aggregate reports, I want to go over just what the levels mean. A Level 1 on this assessment is, would indicate that the student is not performing right now at grade level. They're not performing grade-level work as defined by our current standards. A Level 2 on this assessment would indicate that the student is doing grade-level work, but they're not doing grade-level work at a level that we are certain they're ready for college and career, on track for college-career readiness. A Level 3 would tell us that we are, we're sure that this student is performing at an academic level, they're at grade level, and they have the skills that would tell us reasonably, with a reasonable assurance that they would, that child would be ready for college and career if they continue along that same learning trajectory. And then finally, a 4 would be that a student is performing above expectations for that grade level. On the individual student reports, then, parents received a speedometer, if you will, a gas gauge, if you will, a visual representation that shows in which one of those categories on this particular assessment their child performed. And then our parents also already have access to their school's median score, so the middle score for their individual school. They also already have access to the district median score, and then finally, the state median score for both reading and mathematics. So the next step is tomorrow. Tomorrow, at the Kansas State Board of Education meeting, the building report cards will be released. And this is exciting because we have not seen them yet. We will get our first view of what the new report card looks like tomorrow. My understanding is that we will be able to add additional student learning data, that we want to show a really well-rounded picture of our schools to those report cards, but we've not seen them. So they are supposed to be approved tomorrow at the Board of Education meeting, and then we'll be able to see that aggregate data at the building level. So that will be exciting and would be something to get on the KSDE website tomorrow and look for. So I do want to talk to you a little bit about then what our aggregate data is showing. And what I did is a stacked bar here, if you will. And these numbers reflect the actual numbers as they're reported on the KSDE website right now. So you're going to notice that some of them do not total to 100 percent because they have, there's been rounding. So some of them will equal 98 or 99 percent. But I didn't want to, I didn't want to change the numbers, so I used them exactly as they had been reported, so that they were accurate. The dark orange represents the students that are scoring at a Level 1. Again, our students who are not, right now, on track to be college-career-ready. The lighter orange, peach, and yellow represent students that are considered at or above grade level. And then the peach and yellow would be our students who are on track for college-career readiness. It's important to remember that scores from the different grade levels really can't be compared. And the reason they can't be compared is that the tests are not equated, third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade. So when we look at this data as a district, what we want to look for is the comparison of how our kids locally did with the state averages. And we also want to look, when this next year's data comes in, how our third graders do over time. Because this will give us a glimpse into program improvement. And certainly, our third graders, over time, we would want to see fewer and fewer kids in that Level 1. I'd like to see no kids in the Level 1, but we'd like to see the trend go that direction. So again, it's important to not compare grade to grade because that really is not, the data is not statistically designed for us to be able to do that. I did prepare this a little bit different way on our English Language Arts Assessment data. And on this, what you can see is that light green bar is the students that scored in the levels 2, 3, and 4 at or above grade level. And the dark green bar is our students that scored at a level that would predict that they're on target for college-career readiness. And so I wanted you to see the data represented that way. What you'll notice is our performance at the upper levels is stronger. When you look at that, then it appears to be at the elementary grades. We are working in English Language Arts to increase the complexity of text that students are being asked to read and increase the amount of writing that they're being asked to do throughout school because there's a strong correlation there. And so we certainly are not satisfied with the results as they are. But we do believe our kids and our teachers can certainly make this happen and show improvement.
I'm sorry, what is the third district, third state, fourth district?
Those are the grade levels. I just gave you grade by grade.
Third grade, fourth grade.
I apologize. Third grade, the district score versus the third graders all across the state. Fourth graders locally versus fourth graders all across the state. I apologize.
I'm much of a politician, so I'm sitting there thinking, what district?
Yeah, I know. That's just the grade-level cohort. My graphing needs work, clearly. Okay, so ELA improvement strategies. What we are doing is we are working to have very prescriptive instruction in reading especially. You'll remember that last year, you approved the adoption of the Benchmark Assessment System. And we plan to expand that to the middle and high school. I can tell you that one of our buildings shared with me middle of the year results, that they chose to give that assessment on their own. They shared that with me today, and they were so excited about the performance and the increases in how their students were doing and their ability to target exactly what students need. So very, very positive. And like I said, that is a time-intensive assessment to give, and they chose to do that on their own and then, you know, sent the scores and said, hey, look at this. So that is one thing that we're doing. And the middle school and high schools are asking, can we have that assessment too? So there's some positive talk about it. The other piece is we're looking at the structure of the reading block, and we talked about this last year. That balance between whole-group instruction where students are getting grade-level text, where some challenge for some students certainly, and maybe too easy for some students, but grade-level text, small group where they're getting just-right text, and that's where you make your, where you make your most progress, when you have intervention from a teacher on text that's just-right, and then also independent reading, so that we really are allowing them to develop a broad base of reading, and that's where you really start to build your vocabulary. The second point on the reading block is we do have that elementary cross-curricular pilot. You'll remember that you approved the adoption of a unit last year that we will be piloting during third quarter. And the teachers are very excited about piloting that and intend to write another unit this summer. And then also, middle and high schools are working to really increase reading and writing, and our principals are in all classrooms, across all classrooms, so that students, we have kids' eyes on text and actually composing each day. So let's go on to Kansas math. You're going to see that the graphs look very much the same, and I would say the same thing to you, that you don't want to compare grade to grade. But what you do want to do is compare our third graders at the district with our third graders at the state. And then when we get next year's data, we'll compare year to year for some program evaluation. On this, I do want you to know that at the time of this assessment, our kids that were in third through seventh grade had had three years of instruction in materials that were tightly aligned with the College Career Ready standards. Okay? At grade eight, they had only had two years of instruction in materials that were strongly aligned. And at 10th grade, none. Okay? So that's important to know, and it's, I mean, it's just a piece of background information for you. We did do a text adoption last year for high school, and so we have very strong materials clear up through geometry at this time. So let's look at that same graph that compares the at-above grade level and the college-career-ready. We are continuing to address gaps in knowledge. In math, as we are moving the Kansas College Career Ready standards up, content in mathematics had some dramatic shifts. What you need to know is just a couple of examples. Fractions used to be taught predominantly in sixth grade. Kids are now to walk into sixth grade with that mastered. So fractions are now at fourth and fifth grade. So those kids that hit that year that the new text was adopted, teachers were working very diligently to try to fill in those holes for students, and I think they've done a great job with that. Another example is that solving linear equations, linear graphs, and slope, predominantly algebra concepts in the past, are now eighth grade. And then there are some Algebra II concepts that are now algebra. So as you can see, the bar really has changed, the measure really has changed. And that's why it's important to not compare these results with the previous results, but for us to look at this as a baseline moving forward. What this means is we have teachers at all levels working very, very hard to identify what the holes are for students. And we have students that are being asked to work very, very hard to learn, and they're rising to the challenge. We have some very exciting things happening in our classrooms as you see kids being really stretched.
Ms. X-line, if I could have, I just have one question. On that, if you could go back to the previous slide. And can, do you remember when, I'm trying to think back when we had Math in Focus implemented?
Our third through seventh graders- Our third through seventh graders would have three years of Math in Focus. Our eighth graders would have two years, and our 10th graders would have none.
So is it safe to say that we've been pretty pleased with the results that we've seen from Math in Focus?
Yes, and when you look at the MAP assessment, you really do see the impact of, on a norm-referenced assessment, you see the impact of that programmatically, what that kind of instruction has done. Math in Focus is really asking our students to do a lot of application, a lot of conceptual development for math. And the real shift that's happened with the College Career Ready standards is that you want students to have very strong number sense walking out of elementary school, and then you start to really apply. And it's not that you're not applying at elementary, but you really expect a very strong, flexible foundation walking out of elementary school. And I can tell you, with my own daughter, the flexibility in her mathematical thinking compared to my older daughter, with two different, you know, that shift in approach to instruction, it really is incredible.
Thank you.
So, okay. So math improvement strategies. We're doing some things in math, too, because we can always get better. We have the instructional materials that are aligned to College Career Ready standards. I gave you the years of implementation. We are working on conceptual development, we're working on increasing communication and justifying your thinking in mathematics, and we're working on application in all classrooms. We developed last summer during Curriculum Academy District Assessments that measure students' progress towards mastery of the standards, and our math teachers developed those. They're already suggesting some revisions to those, and so I know that they're using them, and they're looking at the data and trying to better meet kids' needs as they work through that. So let's put state assessments in the proper place. It used to be, under AYP, under NCLB, that the state assessment was the measure. And that just is no longer the case. Now, what we want is we want way more than performance on any one assessment for our kids. We want our kids to walk out of our doors being college and career-ready. Whatever they want to do after they walk across that stage their senior year, we want that door open to them. And that means we need to look at many more things than, the state assessment's just a piece of the pie. And so this is one measure. We also are looking at many other measures of student success, and we'll continue to do that. And this is the direction the state is moving with accreditation as well. And this is also the direction that I'm anxious to see on what's released tomorrow, our ability to add some of those other scores that maybe we think represent what our students know and can do. So overall improvement strategies that we've been working on, we certainly have been working on curriculum alignment with the Kansas College Career Ready standards. We had about 300 teachers last summer working on that over multi-day, over a multi-day workshop, and made some good progress there. We, like I said, we're developing assessments aligned to the standards. We always work to refine instructional practices, and that's something that makes me really proud to be a USD 305 employee. Our teachers really, really want to do what's best for our kids, and you see that in our classrooms each day. We're working on that continuous improvement model. Lots of support for enrichment, lots of support for additional learning opportunities if a child is struggling. And through the bond issues, trying to increase CTE opportunities for students through, you know, classes like broadcasting and CNA, and all the while balancing the need for that well-rounded education with the fine arts. And so many, many exciting things happening that I think educate and go back to that picture of, you know, what is the whole puzzle of how do we make things best for kids? So with that, the last thing I would like to say to you is, am I satisfied with where we are right now? No. But I also know that with the caliber of students and the caliber of staff that we have in USD 305, we will rise to the challenge. We, in our district, we're not going to be satisfied until everybody walks across that stage, ready for whatever next opportunity that he or she'd like to have. So what questions do you have for me?
Thorough report, please.
You did a wonderful job, so well. I don't have any questions.
Yeah, very thorough. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving on in our agenda to our School Board Committee reports and upcoming dates of importance, which include on Thursday, December 10th, our DCP graduation at Salina West at 4:00 p.m. Thursday, February 4th is the Chamber Annual Banquet at the Bicentennial Center at 6:30. And I guess I will start with Ann with committee reports.
I attended the Heartland Head Start Policy Council, and you know all about it now because you're from Lees. And I went to the School Board State Convention, which was my first experience there, and it was quite a good experience. Thank you.
I also attended, as did several of us, and it was a good convention. I particularly enjoyed a presentation on students creating a biofuel at Topeka School District. So that was very well worth it. And the Dog Park continues to dominate the Salina Parks and Rec Advisory Board. However, they have canceled their meeting this week for lack of anything else on the agenda. So that'll be in January, and we'll all be waiting with bated breath for that decision. So that's all I have.
If, good, just a quick question related to that. So where are they at with that decision-making process? Because I've heard multiple venues, multiple locations.
We spent a year working on it and had, I don't know how many, several thousand, I think, patrons called in, texted their preference, went through a great amount of data, a great amount of research. The director of the animal shelter, Vanessa Cowie, happens to be a natural statistician. She said that's how she kept her grade point up, was taking statistics. But she prefers biology, so it was kind of an interesting thing. Anyway, she made sure that her data was good, and then they went before the City Commission after we recommended the East Crawford area. And all of a sudden, they were asking questions that I thought we'd answered a year ago, but they continued to ask and wanted us to go out and research it again. So we got in a van and drove all around, all the different possibilities, and came to the same conclusion, although not formally yet. So that's where we're at.
I was just curious, because my understanding is, I believe, one of the proposed locations was across the street from here at Indian Rock Park, correct?
That's one of the proposals. That's not, I don't think that'll be our recommendation. It was not before, and I haven't seen anything to suggest that will change.
Thank you.
So that's the poop, so to speak. Straight poop. And I have nothing to add.
Okay, Nadja?
I did go to South High School Lovewell Workshop presentation. That was quite good. We have quite a lot of talent in our school system, and it was nice to see that performance. And I did also attend KESB Convention this last weekend, and I think we not only learned a lot, but had a great time. And the legislature, which I was a part of, passed without any question, which I guess is just about a first. So it was very good.
I attended the November meeting of the Central Kansas Cooperative in Education Board of Control. And from looking at the Patron Insights Survey, I see that a number of our patrons are not very familiar with the Central Kansas Cooperative in Education. very familiar with the Central Kansas Cooperative in Education. So just to note that this is a group of 12 districts, school districts, in this area who have banded together to provide services for students who need special education. And this meeting that I attend is a meeting of the 12 superintendents. This time, there was considerable discussion, again, of the Constitution and bylaws. A committee has been working on reviewing that. They've decided that the Constitution is really quite solid, better than most that they've seen in other areas, and they are now looking at the bylaws a little bit more thoroughly. The good news is that speech-language pathologists, who are in very short supply, somehow seem to have fallen from the sky, and there are several who appear to be interested in a position in this area. So that will be coming about, we certainly hope, maybe as many as three. And finally, well, actually, two other issues. One was, one issue that was brought up was transportation, the difficulty of having multiple buses running in many districts, bringing very few students in, and how inconvenient that is for students and also not very responsible financially. So people have been taking a look at that a little bit. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention, I think, was that a lot of discussion was on the challenges of block grant funding, providing tremendous issues for many of our smaller districts, not as much for us at this point because of good management through the years. And anyway, it's a real challenge, so.
And moving on to our superintendent's report.
I get to follow up on Ms. Brandert's report, and when it comes to legislative advocacy, special education funding's got to be at the top of the list. Of all the areas of inadequacy for funding of public education, that's probably the highest. And right now, the state requirement is that excess cost of educating special needs students should be funded at 92%. And right now, I think this year is a 76, 77%. It went up, I think, from 72% only because many of our cooperatives had to cut expenses. And so that fabricated an increase in state funding. And it was no, there were no more state dollars that went into it, we just had less expenses because they couldn't, they had to cut expenses. And so special education funding has, we have to advocate for that with our legislators. It's critically important, even when they're in the midst of writing a new funding formula. Special education funding cannot wait until the end of that funding formula. They need to take a look at that now, so just for what it's worth. The other, as far as my superintendent's report, I have a number of items to report on, a number of events that I've attended. Forced to attend the recognition for Master Teacher Nikki Chamberlain, who is a chemistry teacher at South High, and congratulations to NEA Solana and for an outstanding choice. And I think Nikki Chamberlain will absolutely represent our school district well moving forward. So also had the opportunity on November 19th to attend the Jobs for America's Graduates Induction Ceremony at Solana West. And it's always exciting to see those students inducted into the JAG program. I believe we've had the JAG program. I think this is the second year at West, Solana West. This is the third year, I believe, at Central and South. And so it's also an excellent program for many of our at-risk students. Ms. Peters and I had our last Site Council presentation on November 19th at Lakewood Middle School. And so we had the opportunity to make presentations to all 12 of our attended center's Site Councils, and had some that were very well attended and some that not so much. But always enjoy the opportunity to get out and visit with community members about financial issues, and also they're excited about hearing what's happening with all the construction projects that are, projects that are going on. And then concerts and winter sports are the name of the day, or the name that's carrying right now. I had the opportunity, I was out at South High, I just have to tell this story, with all the construction going on at South High, because we've lost, well, Chris is gone, we lost a certain percentage of our parking area at South High. Irrespective of that, we had, on one evening, we had a duel between South and Central, wrestling. We had a swim meet, an invitation swim meet, and we had a combined elementary orchestra concert at South High, all at the same time. And I think I walked two or three blocks to get to the building, but there were a lot of people in attendance on that evening, all age levels. And so it was really kind of neat to see that diversity of programs at South High School in that one evening. We did have the last of our groundbreakings a few weeks ago, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving with Central High, so we now are 14 out of 14 on groundbreakings. And so we will begin transitioning in mid to late spring on ribbon cuttings. And Jennifer is sitting over there tremendously excited about that. So we're going to start that transition. And again, I have to say this, I've made this comment several times at several groundbreakings, but I can't say enough about the coverage that we've received from the Solana Journal on all the groundbreakings. I mean, I just really appreciate Mike and Tom Dorsey and any of them that have attended. I just appreciate the coverage that you've given, and it is important to our school system, and it's important to our patrons. So thank you very much for that. Also, we had just a bond update. I know you approved the guaranteed maximum price, the parcel, this evening. If you're out and about, drive around South High, you'll see a lot of activity going on. There's a fence, there's a building, not the building, that's the construction building, but there's a modular building, and they were, they're doing groundwork and getting some things going. So you're starting to see some activity there. Over at Central, they've already began building temporary administrative offices in what was, and still is, I guess, not being used that way, but the North Concourse. And so if you go in there now, we have temporary walls, and they're not temporary walls, but they're regular walls or sheet rock walls, but that's going to be the new home for our administrative office staff for the next two and a half years. And so they've got that going, and they'll have some activity taking place over the holidays, specifically some asbestos removal that needs to occur. And then you'll start seeing some activity, some significant activity occurring at Central probably about mid-January. All other projects are proceeding according to schedule and moving forward quite well. Also attended the KASB Convention. I appreciate those of you who were able to attend. I thought we had kind of a good time, not only listening to the speakers, but kind of working together and getting to know each other as well. Dr. Seal Chavez was the keynote speaker. I had an opportunity to attend the keynote address, obviously, and then her breakout. And I've made this comment a couple of times, there's very few people where you can just put them in a room and just say, start talking, and they can make up an hour on just about anything. I don't think she needed an agenda, but she was very well spoken and very knowledgeable. And then obviously, Dale Dennis was there, and he did one of the other general sessions. And I think they decided to make him a general session because every time he has a breakout, it's packed anyway. And so they said, oh, just give him a general session. And then I went to one with Mark Tomlin on legislative session, and they put him in a little dinky room, and it was packed, and everybody was in there. I think John was sitting on the floor.
On the floor, yeah.
Yeah, up toward the front. If I'd have known that, I would have given you my seat.
So he says, but I let him in.
I would have.
I let him in in front of me.
I would have given you my seat. I didn't know you were there.
I should have pulled rank.
Yeah, you should have, absolutely you should have. But obviously, Mr. Tomlin always does quite well, and there's a wealth of information. And so that was, it was an excellent convention, once again.